Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. So the first order of business tonight are those smiling faces. Chris Wilkins in the Parks and Recreation. Chris?
All right, thank you, everybody. Tonight I have a group from Lakeway Elementary. It is a group of second, third, and fourth graders. They have just competed in a statewide event through Destination: Imagination, and their project is based on community service. And this group has done all of the work for their presentation, their project, and everything that you're going to see tonight. So I welcome the Weird Silent Statues from Lakeway Elementary, and they'll tell you about their project.
We are DI team with Weird Silent Statues from Littleton, New Hampshire. I'm Sandy, this is Cam, Porter, Taylor, Eli, Ari, and Connor. This is our second year working with the Dog Park Committee. Our goal is to raise money for a dog park by hosting a dog party tonight, but it's delayed by an evil cat that traps us in some weird dimension. Stay tuned to find out if the Weird Silent Statues can escape this evil cat's lair to get to the dog party activity night.
Hey Sandy, are you ready for this awesome movie?
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, but I hear the cat is really evil. And don't forget Butter and Cockhorn.
No ways, I have it first. Here. And so I'm excited for the dog party activity night later on.
Me too. I'm really glad to have not coordinated and support our fellow friends. Thank goodness Chris was able to get all the food donated from community businesses for the dog park activity night.
I hope we raise enough money for the park. We need to be remembered and bring a band to the gym at Lakeway. I hope we raise enough money for the dog park.
Man, I wish we had a bigger TV. Seriously, another ad, I wish we didn't have commercials.
This commercial is brought to you by the Littleton Dog Park Committee.
My friend, I'm so bored, I want to share the dog park with you.
It would be really great to have a dog park in Littleton, New Hampshire, right?
Yeah, the dogs are sad because they are cooked up inside of homes all day long.
Do you want to help make your dogs happy? Come to and Lakeaway Elementary School's DI team in raising money for a dog park by hosting a dog party activity night. By cooking here, you will be on your way to supporting a dog park in Littleton.
Let's do it, we should quit, okay?
Click!
We're getting sucked up into a TV by a vortex. Oh no!
Where are we?
I think we're gonna faint. Wait, why are we here? What are we supposed to do tonight?
Hey guys, look on the ground, I think it's a clue.
When you put it together, it says, "Have you kissed your dog yet today? Dog Party at Lakeway." Our minds were almost erased. It's the night of the dog party. What are you guys doing here?
We are watching TV when this commercial came on. We clicked a button for the dog park, then we got sucked up by a vortex. Just like you.
Wait, do you feel funny? What is happening to us? What is happening to us? What is hap-? We now have her, a wagging tail, and wet noses. We are turning into dogs. Oh no!
Hey guys, what is happening to the commercial girl?
Is she okay? I think she's changed into a cat.
I, meow, 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 have turned into two dogs. Now your pretty little dog party tonight will not go on. Meow. Ha, ha, ha.
These kids are so funny, they can't catch their mommy. These silly little pets won't go on. These simple little dogs make my face go numb. Thank goodness for me, they won't be free. These foolish little freaks don't even know that their dog won't shake treats make me sleep. Hey guys. Hey, hey guys, I think I got a clue on this. Um, let's find it. Cat does not like dog buttons because I think may come to sleep.
What if we turn the dog buttons into cat treats and trick the kitty? It might just work, and we can try to escape this evil place.
Hey evil villain cat, we would like to be friends, we made you a snack.
Aw, thanks guys. I'm a little sleepy, what did you guys put in this?
We took the evil villain cat and we actually gave him door keys.
Oh no!
Yes, it worked, and now we can go look at evil planet. Figure out how to get out of here.
This place is disgusting. I think turning Steven Green's talk is more than going to the world.
Ew! This cat really doesn't like dogs. Cats or dogs do.
Guys, focus, we need to get back to reality so we can get back in time to raise money for the dog party act- for the dog park activity night.
I'm so worried, how will we ever get out of this awful place? Guys, think, the cat is starting to wake up.
What do you think, she's clicking up and her speakers are over there? Wait, wait, look over there. It's a button.
Y'all know why I'm so tired? Those dogs, those dogs, what have they done?
I got it, I got it, it's a clue. If you read the words if they are written, they don't make any sense. When you read them and put it down, it says, "Dog Party."
You rotten pooches, you can't escape my evil lair. Hit the red button! We're back in time to raise money at the dog party. Places everyone, entrance free dogs. Concession, top dogs, after sweet game tables, color and contests, and don't forget the dance floor! Who let the dogs out? Whoa, 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 whoa.
It is such an honor to work with our community partner, Littleton Parks and Recreation. I love working together and living in a town where we can all count on one another. We were able to get all the food donated for Ari back.
Hooray!
I've never seen so many kids having so much fun in one place. We had over 100 from kindergarten through sixth grade all having fun and supporting the dog park together.
Through our continued partnerships, we were able to raise $850 for the dog park. Because of our continuing commitment towards the building of the dog park, we are supporting- Because of our continued commitment towards the building of the dog park, adult city community know how much we value a healthy lifestyle about dogs and their humans. Our future goal is to represent to the local select board and dog park committee.
We're representing to the select board in the town of Littleton. We would like to thank our coaches, Mrs. Wesker and Mrs. Webb. Time.
So these, this group has recently competed in statewide events against other elementary schools around the state, and they've qualified for their regional event. So I hope they keep going, and they did a tremendous job. They helped with communication, talking to community partners, writing letters, requesting the donations. And at the event, they ran all of the events, the game tables, the coloring contest, they helped pick music. And they facilitated their peers and kids that are even older than they are in having a great time. We had, I think, 130 kids right around there come to the dance. They did a great job, and it was great to see them work. So Weird Silent Statues, thank you for your support.
We normally don't have this much fun at the select board. We'll play on having you back. But we, um, so I would accept a motion to, um, accept the funds for the dog park.
So move.
And I'll second it, so. Now normally, we wait for public input until at the end, but we don't want the kids to have to wait to school money. So we don't want them to wait. We would welcome public input at this time. Very none, all right? Thank you.
Guys, great job.
You've got two minutes to get this out of your mind.
That's okay.
Wait, before you do that, the motion should say to accept and expend.
To accept and expend, okay. So we have a first and a second.
Is it 8:50 or 8:40? Because they said 8:50 on the check. You know what, it might be 8:50 because when we were here last time, somebody bought dental chines.
Oh, okay, problem. So we should, we should verify that. Chris? Just a question on the, on the amount.
Yes.
8:45, the check says 8:50?
We rounded up for the plea, but it was 8:45.
Okay, all right, good, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. We're seeing that we got the first. So to finish with that vote, there's a first and a second to accept and expend the $845 donation from the Weird Silent Statues group. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. So the second is the town manager's report. Andrew?
So first up is the wastewater treatment plant and pump station loan agreement. Article four of this year's town meeting approves the BOS, the Board of Selectment to pursue a grant loan for this project. And this resolution is needed in order for us to go after the USDA funds. And while we're on this topic, Doug Dimko, our new Public Works Director, is here. And I just want to introduce him and to the community and, you know, also see if he has anything else to say about this, this resolution.
Welcome, Doug.
Yeah, welcome. Glad to be in the community and glad to be here this evening. No, I don't have any particular comments.
You know, just pass, you guys each have a copy and one for signature. What this does is it authorizes, it authorizes me to be able to apply for and manage the project grant project, so.
Okay. So we should probably get a first and a second on this, and we'll wait for, yeah, so I'll entertain, entertain a motion.
All right, I would make a motion to, um, for us to sign the USDA loan resolution.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we can save this for public input towards the end.
All right. All right, so next up, we have the 10-year transportation plan. Alex Bolins is here from North Country Council. If you remember, back in November of last year, the select board made a motion to support Littleton's application to put Main Street Phase Two and the Saranac and Main realignment onto the, or make application to put it onto the 10-year plan. So we've, we've done that. The North Country Council Transportation Advisory Committee has looked at it and has some recommendations. And I'd like to introduce Alex to give a short presentation.
Thanks, Andrew. So I have a brief presentation that will basically describe the background of how we got to where we are today. And will provide some of the feedback that we've gotten both through our Transportation Advisory Committee and through Department of Transportation. The project proposal so far is basically intended to just provide a little bit more detail to the letter that we submitted to you last week. Main Street Phase Two is a project that the town has been pursuing funding for a number of years. This time around, they voted to submit this project for consideration for the state 10-year transportation plan, or commonly known as 10-year plan. 10-year plan is a, basically a 10-year budget for the state for state federally funded transportation projects administered to the Department of Transportation. It's updated every two years, and as part of that process, they request project proposals from communities. And so the initial stages are basically the communities and the state's regional planning commissions working together to identify local and regional priorities. Once those are identified, then it moves into a statewide process. So I'm going to go to the first slide. So in December of 2018, Littleton, the town Littleton Select Board voted to support consideration of the Main Street Phase Two project in the 10-year plan. As I mentioned, 10-year plan is updated every two years. Our planning region, which is essentially the northern third of the state, we received $6.1 million in allocation as part of that process for new projects. So typically, that funds between two and three new projects in your plan over two years. This time around, we receive projects from four towns in the map. On the left, the darker yellow is just highlights our planning region. So we're as far south as Brown and Romney. We have them at Washington Valley and it's all the way up to Pittsburgh. So it is a pretty large region. So usually ends up being a pretty competitive process. I want to go to the next slide. So for those who aren't familiar, the Main Street Phase Two proposal basically includes a reconstruction of Main Street starting at Green Street, set by the Littleton diner, going all the way onto West Main Street for a little bit and down Meadow Street. Includes pedestrian safety improvements along Main Street to improve the sidewalks, formalize some of the curbing along there, as well as some street steep improvements with some, uh, some street trees or other landscaping along the road. The Meadow Street component of the project, as I mentioned, there's construction roadway. This would align with a realignment of Saranac Street and Bridge Street to improve the angle of that intersection to make it more safe for tearing vehicles. And it would basically decommission the end of Saranac Street and turn it into a pedestrian walkway. The funding request for this proposal is for the components on Meadow Street and Main Street. Only state maintained roadways are eligible for the 10-year plan, so it does not, the request does not include the Bridge Street and Saranac Street components of the project. All of them would be, need to be incorporated as part of it. Going to the next slide. So through the regional solicitation of projects, there's a prioritization process. So as I mentioned, we have our whole planning region that we solicit projects from. And as part of that, we get, you know, we'll get project proposals in, and ultimately, what we submit to DOT is a ranked list of what are the regional priorities. So as I mentioned before, the process starts where DOT announces the kickoff of a new 10-year plan cycle. We get $6.1 million for our whole region for the new, for new projects. Go to the next. We receive project proposals from communities. Then with our Transportation Advisory Committee, which is made up of representatives of all the communities in the region, there's a scoring process where there's criteria, and we take a look at each of the criteria against the project proposals, and they basically get a score at the end of that process. And that score builds the ranked list. So go to the next one. That list gets submitted to DOT. They review it, and they provide us with revised proposals and cost estimates. So they say, they give their perspective on it, and usually, there's some modification to the proposals as a part of that process. Go to the next one. As I mentioned, cost estimates and revisions to the project scopes. Go to the next. At that stage, North Country Council works with our Transportation Advisory Committee. We developed a final list, final ranking. And then the last step, our commissioners, which is our governing body as North Country Council, made up of representatives of all our communities, they approve that final ranking, and that's what gets submitted to DOT. So that's where we are kind of, we're less involved after that, but there's a whole statewide process with public hearings. The 10-year plan then goes through governor and council and both the House and Senate, and eventually gets signed by the governor. So there's still significant public process at the conclusion of where we're heavily involved. So if you have the next, this is basically where we're at right now. We've gotten our feedback from DOT, and then we're about to go back to our Transportation Advisory Committee to discuss those final project rankings. And as a component of that, we are going and talking to the communities that submitted project proposals. So this complicated looking graph is basically the criteria on which the funders of projects are reviewed by. So there's different categories, and the graph basically shows how much weight is given to each of those criteria. So resiliency, it is, does the project make the transportation facility more resilient to natural hazards like flooding? Project support, is there support in the local community? Has the select board supported it? Is it identified in a local plan's? State repair, does it, will the project improve the surface life of the roadway? Safety, basically looking at, is there a history of safety issues in that area? And what are the measures included to improve safety? Network significance basically means, at a regional level, how important is this section of road? So is it a key connector between communities with few or no alternative routes? Or are there plenty of other alternative routes? And what's, what kind of traffic volumes do we see on it? Alternative modes, so this is basically, does it provide improvements for bicycles and pedestrians to make the facility safer for them? And then mobility is, two components, does it reduce congestion? And does it improve the movement of freight? So like logging trucks, tractor trailers, that kind of thing. So each project goes through this, goes to the wringer, basically with these, and gets a score. This is the preliminary list of ranked projects we have now. Littleton's currently ranked third in the region behind proposals from Gorman and Shelburne. Right now, the Gorman and Shelburne proposals are estimated to use essentially all of the regional funding allocation. So at this stage, the little proposal is on the outside looking in. Like I said, there's still a significant process beyond where we're involved, where things can change and funding amounts can be shifted. So it's not to say that it is not funded at this point. There is still potential, but right now, there is, would be an uphill battle. So I want to go to the next slide. I wanted to highlight some of the feedback that DOT provided. They had two kind of high-level comments. One is that there is a little bit of volatility in the potential final scope and budget for this project, given that the town would need to secure the right of way for the Saranac Street alignment and secure the funding for that component of it. And also, for the Main Street component, anytime you're working in that kind of proximity to a lot of local business owners, when there's a lot of residents, or there's a lot of curb cuts, going through that process can be, you know, time-consuming because you want to make sure that, you know, you're managing construction appropriately to limit impacts to local businesses, that the people who do have frontage on that road are not, are in support of the improvements that are being made there and are not negatively affected by them. So that is something that can also introduce some changes to the scope and budget based on public feedback and any concerns that arise with, you know, the right of ways and things like that in that area. The project timeline, it would basically kick off in 2024 with preliminary engineering. Right of way would be done in 2027 and construction in 2029. That's pretty typical of new 10-year plan projects. They're usually put in the last two years of the 10-year plan. So I want to go to the next slide. So basically, they identified a need for contingency and flexibility in the project's scope and budget. And to that end, they have recommended that the project, if it were to be included in the 10-year plan, it would be structured as a locally managed, local public agency project, which is the same process that he, Cottage Street River District side of a project is managed by. And so this is their approach when there is a project where there's a lot of potential for those changes in the scope and budget. You know, if it's, there's a lot, you know, some of these projects that are proposed are kind of out in more rural areas on the highway, and there's not as many, you know, adjacent landowners, and there's less considerations, and they're like, okay, this, we're pretty confident that 10 years from now, this is going to be the amount of money we spend on it. But this project, since there is that volatility, they do want to have some more flexibility, and that's where the local public agency process comes in. So there's implications for funding. Normal 10-year plan projects are 100% funded with state federal funds. With a, with a local public agency project, there's a 20% local match. Project management would shift from DOT to town as being the primary project manager. And in terms of financing, it would shift from being entirely financed by DOT and structured as a reimbursement type of, the tap project. Same, same kind of process with that. So the town would essentially need to front the federal share of the project, and then it would be reimbursed kind of as it moves to those different places. So it's a significant consideration for, you know, how the town would like one to forward because there is, there is cost implications obviously. The upshot is that there is, you know, a good window of time, but the town would potentially be on the budget for that moving forward. So if you want to go to the next slide. In terms of the cost estimate, DOT estimates we have $4.3 million project. 3.4, 3.5, we could be state federal share with about $860,000 in terms of local match. This all assumes this construction in 2029. It assumes about 2.5% annual inflation between now and 2029. If the final project costs ended up being higher, the project would need to be scaled back, or if the town wanted to, they could increase the municipal contribution. So, go to the next slide. Talking about potential next steps. Option A is that the town votes to continue with the project as is and support consideration for the 10-year plan. Like I said, this is down a guarantee that the project would be funded. As I mentioned, there's an uphill battle to that. We would need, given the timeline of the process, we would need to get that support at tonight's meeting. And I know that's a lot to think about. Option B is that we take a little bit longer term approach. Town can work with North Country Council and Department of Transportation to think about how this project could be kind of phased or broken up to get a little bit more of a better, stronger proposal for your 10-year plan around. So basically undergo a two-year process to, you know, think about, you know, is, could this project just be the Main Street component? And then the Meadow Street component is a separate later component of the project? Think about other alternative funding sources? Thinking about if this is eventually going to have to be an LTA project, have a new budget for it? Either, you know, through the process of going through warrant articles or longer-term capital improvements planning. There are a couple other funding sources that the project is eligible for. You know, as you know, they've applied for federal build grants in the past. Hasn't been successful, but it is a decent candidate for that. There's also funding sources that make fund components of it. So Transportation Alternative Program, once the Cottage Street project wraps up, Littleton would be eligible to kind of apply for that. There's also the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is a statewide program. And that's if you've had a serious accident in a, in a project area, you are eligible to apply for this program. So with the unfortunate fatality that occurred in Main Street in the past fall, the town could potentially be eligible for funding through this program. That's a little bit different. It's not as simple as submitting a proposal and saying yes or no. It's basically an iterative process of working with DOT to identify solutions. So it might get a pedestrian safety benefit through that, but it would maybe not be the exact same thing that's identified in the initial Main Street Phase Two proposal. Could be a little bit different depending on, you know, the input from DOT's engineers. The other option is to locally fund different components of the project through, you know, long-term budgeting and planning. So, you know, if you're looking at doing, you know, a five-year capital improvements process, you know, budget over time for five years to, to look at ways of funding components of the project. So, you know, that probably wouldn't be a wise choice to do to fund a roadway reconstruction on state-maintained highways, but doing sidewalks or other pedestrian safety improvements could be an approach. And by that, you could also build up some matching funds for grants or other funding sources. sources. And these are not mutually exclusive, they could be combined, but that's basically what, you know, kind of the choice that the town has at this point. And, you know, I wish there was a little bit more time where we could have a couple more conversations about this, but we do have, just, there's a process that we have to follow in terms of, you know, our meeting with our Transportation Advisory Committee is later this week. We have to have everything to DOT by the end of the month, in terms of our regional priorities, so we just, we don't have much flexibility in terms of, you know, trying to think about alternative approaches. So it's basically kind of a, at this stage, it's a yes/no, you know, do we want to go with our initial proposal, knowing that if it were to be funded, this is how it would have to be done in terms of municipal match? Or we can say, no, we don't, we don't want to support going into the tenure plan at this time, so we can take this longer-term approach and work on developing a revised proposal for either tenure plan, other funding sources, or looking at budgeting locally.
With option A, Alex, how much, what is the cost to the town, the taxpayers?
Go back a couple slides. So this would be the local match, based on 80% of this cost estimate. And like I said, if, if the cost got expanded, you'd either need to scale the project down into phases, or just a, a component, or even the other option would be to increase the municipal contribution. So that would be kind of the minimum.
Is that, that's only on work on the state roads, or the entire project?
That is just the state roads. So the other, there's the Bridge Street and Saranack Street, it still needs to, there still needs to be identified a local funding source or alternative. You know, that's, the build program could fund that potentially, but there's still that component of it that is.
And does that include sewer work, or is that just roads, sidewalks, storm drain?
For Main Street and Meadow Street?
Yeah.
So for reconstruction, you know, that's typically looking at everything, that would be drainage, you know, anything underlying. But, you know, with the sewer, you know, I'm not as familiar with how the sewer aligns with Main Street, but it's, it's a, you know, a local sewer system, that's not, that would be, that would not be a component of this, it would just be strictly the transportation-related infrastructure. So drainage would be included, but sewer would have to be something that's looked at separately. Which is another consideration, if you are looking at the Sub Two Sewer project, thinking about the, the phasing and construction, you know, you want to limit the amount of disruption on Main Street, you know, so if you're, depending on how these will line, ideally, they'd go, you'd do them at the same time. Likely not an option, given the time of Sub Two Sewer, and when this would go online, so about 20 years would be between those two. This is another consideration as well.
And so, once a project is on the tenure plan, is there a process where the town could amend, could amend the project or its timing? So for example, let's say the Sub Two Sewer work began in 2021, and with the completion of 2021, in 2021, '22, and this was set for, you know, construction '29? Is there a method by which, just due to the timing of things, they could move that within the plan?
That'd be unlikely. So it's not unheard of that projects get moved up, but it's usually has to, it's usually in relation to there being other DOT projects in that area. So for example, in Conway, there's, there are two separate projects in the Conway Main Street area in the tenure plan that were about three years apart. And so, at the request of the town, they moved those projects to be within a year of each other to limit the, kind of just construction delays. But if it's something that's kind of a locally financed project, and you're talking about moving it up, you know, eight years, it's, it's pretty unlikely. I would not, I would not bank on that being an option. I mean, there's not, you know, there's no absolute commitment that if it's in there, then you absolutely have to budget the money, it could always be requested, and it's taken out of the tenure plan. That DOT does not like to operate that way, because it really messes up their, you know, their long-term budgeting.
Yeah.
And so, you know, they probably, not like them suggesting that as an option, but that is, there, there have been cases where projects have been taken out of the plan just because of lack of local support.
And so, just to clarify, option B would be to have an application for next year with an amended phased-in approach?
So there's a, I think there's a lot that could go in the option B bucket. So it would be for the next tenure plan rounds, that would be two years.
So two years, right.
You know, and it's not unusual that, you know, a tenure plan project needs, you know, they will get one, and there's going to be some fine tuning and revising of it, and then the next round, you get a little bit more of a streamlined or stronger proposal. So that's what happened with the Gorman project, that's currently ranked number one, that's been proposed, I think, two other times. But, you know, so it's, we could look at tenure plan, we could look at TAP, we could look at Highway Safety Improvement Program, we could look at build, or some combination of all of those. Are there maybe other funding sources that are just not on the top of my head? But that would be just, yeah, thinking about just, you know, what, if there is looking at any local costs, so that would go into, you know, warrant articles or budgeting, and also just identifying maybe more a stronger phased approach that could present a stronger case for funding.
So is there any way we could find out as far as what the sewer, you said just drainage, as far as you know, but nothing as far as the cost of the sewer?
No, I think that's considered municipal infrastructure, whereas the sewer is, that's DOT's responsibility, or the strange is DOT's responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, phasing them together is to the benefit of, you know, the town and DOT, it's going to maybe reduce costs for everyone, but, yeah, that's, yeah, they would not fund that part of it.
So Main Street Phase One was done eight years ago?
2010?
2010, so nine, nine years ago.
Nine, ten, yeah.
Right around there.
Yeah. So, because you were in charge, you were in charge.
I remember that. I remember it.
So the infrastructure is pretty much the same with Phase, I mean, we're looking at the same with Phase Two, correct?
Yeah.
So it's the same.
Yeah. What would, I guess, if, if we're, we're looking at work number three right now, then we have to wait another two years to go in. If we chose option A, then over the next two years, if other funding sources became available, I don't think there's anything wrong with us saying, you know, thanks, but no thanks, we've got this.
Right.
But if we stay the course, there's at least an option. So, I mean, that's kind of my thought on it.
My question, I don't see how you can vote on this, not without having the sewer stuff supplied, because that's directly on a sewer project that's paid for by the sewer users' feet. And until such time, if you in turn get that information, I don't think you can vote on it, out of bounds.
Here, let me, let me try to help you in the spirit of helping. Bruce isn't wrong, you also are neglecting your water component, you're also neglecting the telecommunications component when we did Main Street Phase One. Fairpoint is still a little truncated line down through there, so that didn't get renovated. We had to work with Water and Light with, working with their funding mechanism and their timeline to get that in. He's right with the sewer. Also, I'm looking at Phase Two, which is about 180 degrees different than what originally was sold to the voters as Phase Two, with the rotary, with really connecting in the spirit of Phase Two was to connect Meadow Street with its walkability, with its sidewalk that goes almost all the way down to Hadlock's Place now, was a longer run, and they were looking at a rotary and trying to move the pedestrians from West Main. This is looking like it's addressing Saranack, when Saranack wasn't really even a major player, other than trying to reroute it up around Jiffy Mart in the day. So to make this really convoluted, your best, from prior experience of Phase One, is to go back and get all of your ducks in a row, with Water and Light, with sewer, with your telecommunications provider, so when you go down into that ground, unlike what we did in Phase One, where we left a telecommunications, Verizon, actually Fairpoint at the time, out of the game because they couldn't agree. You really want all of that in a row before you go and apply for this. So you, when you're asking the state for the money, you have your categories broken out by how much is locally raised, and I can tell you, working with Mrs., oh, what was her name? Come on, she was head of DOT.
Murray.
Yeah. She wanted to know what was a local commitment from the town, and we were counting Water and Light's commitment, we were counting the sewer commitment, which made it huge for them to pony up more money for us. So that helps you when you're trying to sell, where, because right now, this nice gentleman is saying, hey, meet this, but we're really not, we have not done our due diligence to be prepared to really sell it to the state, get ourselves, you know, with a shovel-ready project, ready to go. That's just previous experience.
And the other thing is, with your plant, you need to go back to planning board. There's no way any truck can turn around, get there by Cory's store, pulling out of there, becoming access into Saranack Street. You've got to reconstruct that whole thing out of it. That's, there's no way any big truck can come in there and down through there and on the other street.
So, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'll just say one thing. So the whole, this is a planning document, this isn't a final construction document. What the, the tenure plan is really to get it into the queue, and so what, what you're talking about, Bruce, and also to some extent, what ours is talking about, is really when you get into preliminary engineering, and you're really, that's when you're really getting all those details laid out. After that, after you get preliminary engineering done, once you get that final engineering, that's where you're really building out in detail all of the costs, whether it's, you know, the stormwater, you know, the utilities and all that, getting all, all of your ducks in a row. This is really to get a placeholder in the tenure plan, which honestly, I think we probably should have done 10 years ago.
Well.
You know, because now, now here we are, ready to, you know, start moving and getting things done again, and, you know, it puts us into a queue for, for later down the road, and then it's probably a political, you know, something else that we're not really showing here, so there's, there's probably some political behind-the-scenes work that has to be done to try to work with different parties to, to get the project moved forward more quickly.
But you've had eight years to do that, and you haven't done it. Now you're asking somebody to vote on something. Well, you're asking for something to be voted on, which hasn't been addressed, and you haven't had any opportunity to. You're putting the, you're jumping the gun.
This, this project was approved back in 2009, I believe. It was, it was, this is the same project that was reduced in scope due to the funding requirements of the initial Main Street Phase One. So this section was actually taken out, just to be able to make that budget. So this isn't something new, this is a old project.
If it's not new, why haven't you gone out and got the cost of the sewers and stuff like that, so when you walk in here, and you could talk to the people of the town?
Article Two, that was Article Two, this year, this year's town meeting, we have the sewer completely, all, that's all good to go, so that's all part of it.
I'll bring that up, because you're going to bring it up later on. I want some statistics on that thing on it, because I, yes, it was passed, but I don't sure that there was any necessarily need of that.
You can probably get that to Bruce.
I don't know what he's talking about, maybe he can give us more detail about it.
Maybe you can give, give Andrew more detail, Bruce.
Well, you people said you were going to have it open to the public on that part of it, so I was waiting on, because of the public part of the input on it. Yes, it was voted on. My question, I wasn't here, and I still am asking the same question, I want to know, in the last 10 years, how much money have you spent in damage control problems? Can people have, have the town has gone up there and done anything? I don't know if we've ever had any problems up in that area, and you're going out looking for this project to go into it, and I, I'm looking for some numbers out of the thing on it that shows the fact that you have had a lot of problems with sewers, roads, water.
Passwording moving forward.
Yeah. All right, well, let's, um, thank you, Bruce, for sharing that too. And Art, thank you for, for sharing as well.
I also, excuse me, before you vote yes or no, I would like, you know, an insight by the taxpayer of Littleton, because this other year, right, you know, as a party, I could tell, you know, it's $900,000, it's almost, almost a million dollars that cost to the taxpayer. I think the project is going to be accepted, whatever, and I probably, you know, I care better on the, maybe, not even about, I'm with people in town that know about this project, unless they're involved, like you guys, you know, the town manager. My main concern, it's a taxpayer. And this other year, before you even vote yes or no, it's, the taxpayer, they cannot , they complete the package.
Well, thank you, Ruth, thank you, Ruthie.
It's, that's, you know, that's my main concern, everything else looks good.
No, thank you for sharing, and I think going back to what Andrew said, it's more of a place card, placeholder at this point. We're not committing anybody to anything with hard numbers. We do have to do our due diligence in getting.
But this gentleman over here, he pushed, he requested that the board voted tonight, yes or no. It, you know what I mean? And you can vote tonight.
It shouldn't vote.
Yeah, they should vote, you know.
Alex?
So, yeah, the vote is, you know, to support consideration of this for the, for the plan, and like I presented in the project timeline, we would be at least five years out from even the very initial phases where you're doing the engineering the right way. And so, you know, before that time, you would, you would absolutely would need to go to the public and get, you know, the voter's approval to raise that match, and you would have, you know, five years to do that.
Or do it through other means, such as matching grants or?
Exactly, yeah. So, yeah, it's not, this is not supplanting a warrant article saying, we're going to raise 850 or close $1,000, it's saying, you know, we, this is, we support the inclusion of this in tenure plan in the future, and then it would essentially, you know, kick off that public process that you are asking for.
I do want to open it up, though, for more public input, I mean, it's.
I mean, if you guys are, to help you, if it's sincerely just a placeholder, you can do your engineering study later, and you can get all your ducks in a row, you're not asking for a dollar on the tax rate today.
That's right.
You're not. I mean, granted, it's going to be 10 years from now, and I agree with you, Ruthie, if it's going to be a buck, then pay attention to it, let the voters decide, but you're using it as a placeholder. We did the same thing with Main Street Phase One.
That's right.
We went time and time again, went through this process, so it's not Christopher Columbus and doing this. And no, we didn't have our ducks in a row either, we didn't. And Bruce, we didn't either, I, I know, there were a bunch of mistakes, I mean, and I wish that I could help them and tell them, hey, do this, do this, as you and I are saying now, but here's the answer, they're not prepared, and it isn't because these three people didn't do their homework, it's people like me, who got off of the board, didn't follow up with Phase Two, and others that didn't do it. So I can throw myself underneath the bus, that and get on the committee, I'm not saying you guys are perfect, and you're doing the right thing, but what I'm saying is, is that if you don't start the process and start hustling now and realizing all the pitfalls from Phase One, then you're just going to sit here and continue to talk about it, and it'll be Bruce and I, 20 years older, sitting here talking about the same stuff. So if you feel comfortable that you can change the scope of the project, you can change where it's going to go, how it's going to go, and you're not going to get kicked out of the process, we did the same thing.
We didn't do the same thing, to be honest with you. We had Carol Holby, who was a local Littleton girl out of it, who was the head of the Highway Department, I was saying on it, and we got her support because she was from Littleton, New Hampshire. Then we ended up having the town manager at the time, he wasted $400,000 of our money at the time out of it, on what he did as a town manager. Okay? And that's what I don't want to have continually happening through the new town manager. Okay? We've had that happen before, and he wasted $400,000 of our money. It was a set aside from that part, looking for his so-called engineering and the other things on it, but he in turn did that, and it was a wasted money.
Let's, um, stay, bring it all back, bring it all back.
Bruce is talking about, it's a process that they went through, which was People for Public Places, I think, was the name of the organization, and they had meetings and engineer studies, a lot of money was wasted, and Bruce was right, finally the people decided they had enough through warrant articles and voted on it and pushed it through. So Bruce is right, but in this case, which is different than on Phase One, is we were awarded money in the preset, so we had funds, the town manager had funds to expand. In this case, you're applying again on the process, you have to do all your homework, and you've got to fund it at the localized rate, so there is some money that you're going to expend getting prepared for this.
That's right.
So, yes, you are going to hypothetically waste some money in engineering this, so listen to Bruce, Bruce isn't wrong, and he's wanting you to be fiscally responsible with what's your engineering, and that you're not doing stuff that we're never going to use, because we learned from that, that's translated to what Bruce experienced.
Just in my own defense, as town manager, I'd say that we have a pretty good track record of not wasting money in getting infrastructure projects engineered, going from idea concept to preliminary engineering to completion.
That's your argument.
That's all right.
You're all part of Saranack Street, you're included in the last.
So we're, we're at a point where we've got to, we've got to take a vote, so. And the whole idea is to put the placeholder there. So, and we, as a select board, did vote back in December of two thousand and eighteen for this, the work to be done, and that's exactly what you're presenting to us. So, I would entertain a motion to go with Option A.
So, moved.
Okay, so I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Good. Thank you, Alex.
So, while that, while my PowerPoint reboots, we did have something on the agenda, which was initially on there. Let's see if it's been, it's been taken off already. Of tax sales of town property, that's after old business.
Yeah, that actually, we will be opening up the bids on the twenty-second.
That's right.
But today was the deadline at three thirty for those bids to be in. So, on the twenty-second, we'll open up those, those bids. Did you, um, did you want to talk about the continuance of the Eaton property?
Yeah, the only new information that I have, I mean, I just was going to put a map up, the same map I had last time, but then my PowerPoint has crashed, is that I've reached out to the engine, there was an engineering firm, I can't remember the name, I had it right here, but they've gone out of business since, they dealt with the Eaton property. And they have a number of documents. There is another company that bought all of their records, or took all of their records. So, I've reached out to them, and they're doing a search right now. Because it was so long ago, they said they actually have to, like, manually go into their archives and look. So, they're doing that right now. Also, a local asset we have is Dick Bollinger has reached out to us, and has said that we have quite a bit, he, he has quite a bit, quite a number of records that are available for us. So, he's right now gathering, going to gather those and try to work with those. I think he must have been a point person back on the initial exploration. So, we'll have more information soon. And, you know, I don't know if the board wanted to consider any other action on it, or?
Well, I think where Franco was the one that asked us to hold off on it, where he's not able to be with us tonight, I think it would be good, if you're in favor of that, of waiting until he can be a part of this discussion.
Yeah, okay. Good. Now, with that, I'll just go over a couple of other updates I have on, on here, just with some action, activity over the past couple of weeks. So, Jim Graham from Wells River, not Wells River, I'm sorry, Woodsville Guaranty Savings Bank has reached out, and he's just exploring potential naming rights and financial support of the River District project. I let him know that we have a planned NH process coming up, and that maybe it'd be best to look at what we actually come up with out of that. Bishop Street Tax Parcel, so there's a parcel on there that we were putting up for sale, and I met with Rod Marvin, and we went over to the parcel, and he had some really good ideas and some thoughts about some future issues. There used to be an issue there with snow removal, and the lot's pretty small. And so, we will have an idea for you to, to consider passing over a bit on that. NCIC, we've been working with them, doing continued USDA grant planning. We've had a, a community meeting recently to explore a path forward for working with the school district on Lakeway discussions. Part of that involves also finding a purpose, or any future purpose, or options for the Eaton parcel. With Plymouth State University, I've been talking with them about their community planner program to see if we could partner with them for some internship opportunities. We had a parking commission meeting on the twenty-seventh, and I believe the parking commission, Alex can confirm if I'm off, because he's actually helping us with that. They're very close to having a final draft that they're, they'll likely be approving sometime here shortly. We, I took a look at the library, Metta Library, we did a drainage project there last year. Turns out that the drainage project is working really well. Now, we're just talking with a budding property owner. He's having some drainage issues, and so he's probably going to need to do some work on town property to help fix his issues. Still working with a property owner that had to do with a warrant article to negotiate a final price. We're beginning to plan for Greenup Littleton Day, so people should look forward to that.
That's, um, I guess, Chad, Chris has already left.
He's left.
It's April twenty-ninth, Saturday.
That sounds about right. It's the week, I believe, after, usually first day, yeah. The Northern Region Borders Commission, so one of the things that we're working on with them is the rail trail. We've had a grant award for some time. We've had to get a couple of extensions due to just the bureaucratic process of the trail abandonment from the Federal Surface Transportation Board. And in talking with them last week, they gave us verbal approval for another extension if it was needed. We had, and we also have a site visit coming up with the Bureau of Rails and Bureau of Trails to look at the, the project and really get the Bureau of Trails to finalize their scope. And I think part of the holdup is that the Bureau of Trails actually might have some assets that are on the ground that they would like to put into their storage and reuse. So, the Bureau of Trails, before they do their request for proposals for the project, needs to, you know, isolate what that is. Like, for example, the gauge of the rail is something that might actually be used in another part of the state. It's more of a historic gauge, and they don't want to have to reproduce it, rather than putting it up for recycling. CGI, Community Film Planning, so we're working right now to get different, we, we have four different community film pieces that we're going to work on, community economic development type things, and also maybe education and healthcare and that sort of thing, so we're working with them. I'm working with the Opera House, and a, there's a consultant who works for another firm, and I'm working with them quite a bit. We have River Park and Eversource, so we're, we're planning a meeting right now. We'll have a couple of meetings up here in the future. I went to the planning board just to give a presentation about an Eversource. They were requesting the easement, and we're offering a license, and then also the perro property lease. We had our Buxton rollout on four-four. It went, it was really well-attended, I thought. And we had two sessions, and I think we probably could have done more. There was more people who were interested, but just couldn't make that date. So, I'm going to do a kind of a wrap-up and contact another of the businesses who told me they were interested in participating and make sure that they have an opportunity to do so. We had a really good regional economic development discussion that evening. Tim Egan invited a number of people, including some financiers and different developers to take part. And I've been invited to the White House, which is kind of exciting. So, on, on April seventeenth, I plan on going to the White House, and it's specifically to talk about economic development and opportunity zone funds. So, I'm not sure, quite sure what to expect, but. And then also, this past Friday, I believe it was Friday, we had our Public Education Government Channel, the uploading equipment for Grant North TV, formerly Channel Two, stopped responding, and it's now failed. So, we've started kind of an emergency process, working with NCIC to explore alternative funding, to see if there's anything out there to help us. We'll need, I think it's around fifty to sixty thousand dollars to be able to get the equipment. The equipment we have right now is outdated, and there's no parts for it anymore. And so, what we're doing is looking, looking at getting new equipment that serves more purpose than just regular TV. It would also allow for live production, and it also has another, more robust online presence, so it'll get us into the, into the future, so. And really, that's the, the main events that I have here, so.
You see?
Yeah.
Thank you. The, no Board of Assessors.
Yeah.
I got one under that.
The only other thing we have left are the, excuse me?
I got a question on the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
The Board of Assessors, I have a thing on it. I'm very concerned about what is just going to be happening here on April fifteenth, okay? Number one, the Town of Littleton in turn threw property taxes. We have one business in the Town of Littleton that was reassessed for forty, for four million dollars. And four million dollar figure, they paid, I think it was ninety-seven thousand dollars in taxes.
Forty million.
It was, no, I'm talking about, the business that I'm talking about was assessed at four million dollars. And the fact that they paid ninety-seven thousand dollars in property taxes. Okay? Now, the next one that I'm very concerned about is the Littleton Hospital in turn, which was reassessed at forty, no, yes, forty million dollars on it. And as a result of their assessment, they're only paying a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Okay? There's something wrong. Littleton Hospital took in ninety million dollars. They're not paying their fair share of taxes out of this. They've also in turn, under their agreement that they signed, was for a ten-year commitment signed by the selectmen in this place. And consequently, when they did this, it was set up so if they changed their process of what they do, they put in a pharmacy, there's an ad in the paper where they're going to be having another, I brought it in here, I don't know what it's called, but they're going to try to compete against this other outfit in here. That's a change. Littleton Hospital is not paying their fair share of taxes out of it in this town, based on the reassessment of the forty million dollars. Now, part of it is, I'll say they're not paying their fair, but what I'm very concerned about is suddenly the Town of Littleton in turn is advertising that they're going to hold a meeting on April fifteenth for a pilot to be putting on the dam. Okay? And it's not held at night when anybody can attend. It's right in the middle of the day, and it's at noon time in the town office, I have a thing on it. Something wrong with what you people are doing. That's probably one of the most important things that should ever be assessed on it. And the way it was done before, by whoever signed that thing, it was, we got ripped off with the other. And consequently, I don't want this to reoccur with the power companies on the basis of what they're doing. It scares the hell out of me on what you're doing. And one, to hold a meeting at noon time when nobody else can attend, that's absolutely stupidity on the thing on it. This is a very, very important hearing on it, on the basis of trying to set up a pilot for the, for the dam. And it should be taken into consideration completely different than you ever did with a hospital. In other words, a hospital in turn went from like a three or four million dollar deal to a forty million dollar deal. And if you did that same thing on it, you should be addressing it so it would, if it was a pilot, and you put a lot of different things in here so that it was changed on, I think on from that part. But I don't want to have the town manager and the selectmen making any decisions, and I want the public to be able to be very aware of what they're trying to do, and you should be holding that meeting at night.
Thank you for your, your concern and input, Bruce. I appreciate that. The, as far as public comments, we do need, or does anybody have any public comments as far as with the wastewater treatment plant and pump station loan agreement? Any public comments on, on that? Okay. Hearing none. Do we need to go into non-public?
No, I got one more.
Okay, that's fine.
Just under public comment.
Yeah, about any other public comments?
I went through Glen's Falls, New York, just recently. And when I did the, they had taken their fire hydrants, and they had hoses hooked up to their fire hydrants. And they were washing all the sidewalks down and their roads, and they had just gone through their whole town and redone their light poles and the main streets and everything else on it. Cleanliness is godliness, I have a thing on it. In the Town of Littleton in turn, you could very easily hook onto every fire hydrant and do exactly the same thing and wash the sidewalks down. This main street gets a tremendous amount of dirt, and they get it because of the logging trucks and logging industry that comes through here on it. It's, I used to own property on the street, and it's been there for years. But they do not, you could actually go in and clean this thing more than once a year. You could have your fire department do it at three o'clock in the morning with something like this, or your town people do it no different than you picking up snow. But you could clean that thing, and it should be looked at with the idea of cleaning the sidewalks, and you could put a crew of people on to just hook on. I was amazed. I looked at it, and there's an attachment that went on all their fire hydrants. And you got a fire hydrant, and I don't know how many feet, but every feet, I have a thing on it from that part, and the hose, and you could wash all your sidewalks off.
Probably wouldn't, probably didn't take too long either.
No, they were, they were doing it, and where I saw it, they had a crew right in front of a school. And I think that they were doing it also to keep it clean, so they didn't have to pay for the cost of bringing the sand into the school and dealing with it too. But it was neat, they were, they were doing it on every hydrant, keeping up through the other end.
That's good. That's a, that's a good suggestion, Bruce. Thank you. Any other public comments, anything else? Doug, thank you again for joining us tonight.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, yeah. Want to adjourn? Okay, I'll second it.
We're in favor of it.
Thank you, everybody. See you in two weeks.